For the common council, the first item agenda would be to consider the minutes from the February 25th meeting for approval. Those minutes were available to you prior to the meeting. Any questions or comments on the minutes as presented?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Kissling.
Seconding.
Seconded by Bowden. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Claims are also available for review. Any questions or comments on the claims? Do we ever have a motion to approve the claims as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by McFerrin.
Motion seconded.
Seconded by Dubon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. As was advertised, this is also a time to, a special meeting of the Board of Public Works, so at this point I'd like to call, to order the meeting of the Board of Public Works as well to join the council in this joint meeting. And the reason for the joint meeting is to receive a report from Commonwealth Engineers on our wastewater treatment facility. The Board of Works authorized this study a year ago to do an investigation of where we are on our wastewater facility and some future plans for that. So I would invite Eric to come forward and offer his presentation for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Works and council members. As the Mayor indicated, we were commissioned to do a study of the wastewater utility specifically focusing on hydraulic issues and concerns we had at the wastewater treatment plant. We began the study last year, I believe somewhere around August or something of last year, and had now completed that and wanted to present the findings of the study to you tonight for your concurrence with that. So I have prepared a PowerPoint that kind of goes through this. So this is your wastewater treatment plant. What you're looking at here in the tanks that are shaded in green are your primary treatment facilities. So the plant consists of a headwork structure where everything comes in, primary clarifiers, these two circular tanks, the oxidation ditch, which is the primary treatment unit at the facility, then two secondary clarifiers, a disinfection structure, and a post-aeration structure. This facility is rated at 1.114 million gallons per day of average flow and a peak flow of 2 million gallons per day. The issue comes in that if you exceed 2 million gallons per day, which you do, then you have to go into a wet weather operation. During your wet weather operations, the tanks or the actual lagoons that are shaded in blue are activated to store excess flows above 2 million gallons a day. Now, the intent is for the flow then to be drained back into the plant for complete treatment and then discharged to the ditch. But what unfortunately occurs is sometimes that 2 million gallon a day plus flow occurs for multiple days in a row, and you exceed your ability to store that additional flow in these lagoons. What happens then is the flow is chlorinated in this last lagoon for disinfection purposes and then blended back in with the fully treated wastewater and discharged out the effluent. Now, you are meeting your effluent limitations, so you look good and that plant operates well. But the problem is from a hydraulic and organic capacity situation, the blue tanks don't count at all. So when we look at your permit and what the facility is actually permitted to do, we go back to that 1.114 and that 2 million gallon per day peak of the facility. So if we studied your flows over the course of a number of years, starting in January of 2016 through May of 2019, and we compare those to what the design values are for your current wastewater treatment plant, the top row in blue is the design values. Now, these are the loadings that come into the plant, and the whole plant is designed to be able to handle these loadings. The rows below that, in this lighter green color, are your actual flows that we observed during that time period. If we look in the first, or actually the second column of flow, we would see that your actual average flow was 1.417 over that period. Your design flow being 1.114, your average flows were higher. You're at essentially 127% of your design during that period when we look at strictly at flow. The other thing I want to point out as well is if you look at your peak monthly flow here at 8.54, that's the maximum flow we received in a day through that plant. So we processed a lot more than the 2 million gallon per day peak that it's actually rated at. The other flow number I want to point out is this 2.645. I know this is a lot of numbers, but when we look at, look forward to design and what the facility needs at a minimum to be able to treat, that is the number that we look at. That is basically the average month that was the highest during the period that we observed. And there were multiple months that were in this range that were well above 2 and close to that 2.6 number. So it's not like it was just an anomaly that we would have reason to throw out. So that kind of shows us the situation that we're at with flow. Now, a lot of this is rainfall-induced inflow and infiltration that's making its way into the system, and that is directly showing up through the high peaks that we see. The other problem, though, that we need to point out is we also need to be concerned about the organic loading to the facility. The organic loading here is essentially represented by the CBOD and the ammonia in columns that you can see. On average, your CBOD is at about 86% of your design loading, but your ammonia in is at 178%. And when we look at our maximums, you're over 200%, over two times what that loading should be. Now, again, the plant runs very efficiently. Whenever we design facilities, there is a bit of safety factor that's put into those numbers. You are meeting effluent limits. So really what that's telling us is while we're making our effluent limits, our loadings are higher than what we're designed for, so we're essentially operating in that safety factor zone at the plant. We're taxing it very hard. We're making the numbers that we need to on the effluent, but our affluent numbers are dangerously close or over, in fact, what our design values are. This is an issue that has been brought to the attention, or that has come to the attention of IDIM as well. Strictly looking at flow, a common thought with that would be if we're getting so much rain-induced inflow and infiltration, why can't we take this out at the source where it's coming into the collection system pipelines? And that is a valid approach and a valid thought. The issues that we have, though, is we need to be reasonable about how much we believe we could actually reduce from the system. Huntingburg has been very, very proactive in efforts to try to reduce their inflow and infiltration into the system. Over 20 years ago, I was involved in a smoke testing study that was done throughout the town, and there was efforts as a result of that study to reduce some of this inflow and infiltration. And there's been ongoing efforts every year in that time spent. Brad Coomer's here from the wastewater treatment facility, and he indicated that over the last two years, the town has spent over $250,000 just on pipe replacement. That doesn't count investigative work, lining, repairs, and things like that. So it's not a situation where we haven't been looking or the town has, city hasn't been trying to address this issue. It's a situation of where there's no large identifiable smoking guns, if you will, direct contributors to the system that are then going to result in significant reductions in flow. So for purposes of discussion, we've been involved in many inflow and infiltration reduction-type projects in the past, and some of the largest ones that we've done, the most success that we really see is a 20% to 15% reduction in flow. So for sake of argument, I think if we would state, or state our success rate at being a 20% reduction, where does that put us in relation to our flows that we actually see at the plant? Well, it only reduces our peaks down to 2.12 million gallons, our peak month down to 2.12 million gallons, which is still 190% of your current capacity. And just looking at the overall annualized averages, it's still at 1.13, which is, again, above your capacity of your plant. Point being here, if we had successful INI reduction, we would still have a flow issue at the wastewater treatment plant. So we know something needs to be done to address flows there. So the next step we want to look at, having identified the existing situation, is what's our future situation going to look like? The existing peak month there at 2.645 million gallons per day is the design factor that we need to look at. If we were to go to the facilities construction section of the Indiana Department of Environmental Management with a project and ask for them to provide a permit for that, that's the flow number they would want to see, the peak month average that you actually, flows that you actually received at the facility. And that would basically be your baseline number that we need to have our design average flows established at. Now, above that, we want to project residential and commercial and industrial growth over a 20-year period. The 20-year period ties in with some of the general funding agencies that we would be looking at to fund a project such as this, and it's just a good term to look forward to when we're planning wastewater projects. So all those numbers added together comes up with a new design average flow of 3.35 million gallons per day. Now, that's roughly three times what your current facility's capacity is. You can see over on the right, I indicated a peak day flow. When we design facilities, as far as treatment goes, we really focus more on this design average flow, but we also have a peak day that we can hydraulically handle and as well as provide adequate reduction in pollutants and still make our effluent at that peak day. So we're looking at a peak day of 9.5 million gallons per day. It gives us quite a bit of a range to handle those wet weather events. So alternatives as far as what we need to do, obviously we want to look at the do-nothing option. We want to look at upgrading the existing facility, and then we want to look at alternatives for new types of wastewater treatment plants that we may want to investigate. So the do-nothing option, essentially that doesn't address any of our needs. The wastewater treatment plant is overloaded hydraulically, and we have concerns with your organic loadings as well. You could be subject to a tap ban preventing new taps from being added. Indiana Administrative Code establishes that IDIM can issue an early warning sewer connection ban when you receive, when you are at 90% of either your organic or hydraulic loading of your plant. As you can see from the previous slides, you're well over that point. Now, they haven't issued that ban yet, but they did an inspection on December 31st, 2019, and in that inspection, they did identify that the facility is hydraulically overloaded. We want to obviously avoid that at all, if at all possible. Yes?
Don't we interrupt?
No, you're fine.
You just mentioned just a while back that for a new MPDS permit today, it would take 2.6 million.
Yes.
For a plant requirement?
Yes.
And where it might?
1.114.
1.1.
Yeah.
So to do nothing, that's a smoking gun there, isn't it?
Right, right, yeah.
It's out.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're over double the existing capacity.
We're over double what we need, yep, when we look back at that peak month flow. Absolutely. Good point, very good point. The other thing would be that untreated wastewater would continue to be discharged, creating a risk to human health and safety. That's that wet weather or that side string treatment that identified it is not, it has not received full treatment, as we don't have any organic really reduction in that treatment train. So again, we're meeting limits now. There's no urgent concern about exposures or anything with the effluent, but we're just operating in that, in that safety factor zone. Upgrading the existing plant has problems as well. The facilities that we would need to be able to get those flows, at the minimum that 2.6 million gallon per day, would be piping up sizing. We have insufficient space out there. The clarifiers, which are the round tanks, need honestly to be either replaced or additional clarifiers added.
Some of those originals were built in 1957.
Some of those originals were built in 1957, yes. Actually, most of the tankage and lagoons that you see out there are 57 to 73 when they were originally constructed. So we have age issues, separate from everything else that we're discussing here. The oxidation ditch, which is really your main backbone of your treatment, would have to be added to, and we simply don't have size to add to it where it is. So basically, we're very, we're very limited in what we could do to actually get more flow through the existing plant with expansion. It would create much more complexities for operational staff as well. So for that reason, we looked at new facilities. Now, this is the same type of treatment you do now, which is an oxidation ditch. When I say that the ditch needs to be expanded, that's the size it would need to be. So you can see why we really don't have that option of upgrading the existing plant. It takes up almost that whole footprint where all those other tanks are. And then the two circular tanks that you see on the end, they're the secondary clarifiers, so you can also see just in comparison how much larger the tankage would need to be. We looked at another type of treatment operation called a membrane bioreactor. These are, the advantage of these are they are very, very small footprints, but they are quite costly. And then finally, we looked at sequential batch reactors. Those are the four tanks you see down in the corner. They kind of bridge the gap. They are a smaller footprint, yet the cost is not as great, and they are very easy to operate, and we actually see lower operational costs compared to the type of facility that you, that you have currently. In addition to the main treatment units, we would also have a new headworks, and we would be changing from chlorine disinfection to UV disinfection, which is a much more reliable and safer disinfection technology. The real issue here, of course, is going to be the cost. As we look at that, and on the slides, a little bit difficult to see, the SBR option certainly comes out as the least expensive option at $17.9 million roughly. Your next least costly option is the oxidation ditch at roughly $23.7 million, and then finally, the MBR plant at over $27 million. So a very sizable undertaking, obviously. When we look at the gallons per dollars cost, though, it is, it is quite reasonable comparative to what we see with other facilities. The other advantage is this keeps everything within your current flood wall and your current flood protection out there. A few years back, I think it was 2009, a project was done to extend that wall and provide additional protection to the facility. This lets us still maintain and take advantage of that project by keeping everything within that flood wall as well. So as we talk about funding options, this is certainly something that needs to be explored further for a project of this size. Some of your main funding options that you may wish to look at would be the State Revolving Loan Fund. They offer low-interest loans currently at approximately 2% with a 20-year term. The USDA, Rural Development Office, also offers a low-interest loan. That's currently at 1.625% for 40 years. And then also, you are eligible for a grant through the Economic Development Agency due to impacts from coal mining operations being shut down and other factors in your area. You do qualify for grants through them. Now, their typical grant amount is about $2 to $4 million, but it can go upwards of that. I would certainly recommend asking for more than that and then seeing what kind of a package they can put together. I should add that Rural Development does also offer loans in combination with, or grants in combination with their loans, but you can't couple those two grants together. You can do the USDA loan and the Economic Development Agency grant, and you may get a little more grant from the Economic Development Agency than you can through RD. So we're really too early in the process to come up with preliminary rate impacts at this time. Further work needs to be done with your rate consultant and really to kind of identify what kind of funding packages we can get to see what the impacts would be. So with that said, I'd like to kind of identify maybe next steps that we might want to consider moving forward and typically how we see these projects play out. The report, which I'm basically presenting tonight, is essentially complete, so that covers us through the first, second quarter of 2020. Then oftentimes, we'll see like a strategic planning committee be formed to evaluate best steps to move forward, disseminate information out, and really kind of be in a liaison for the Board of Public Works and the council to follow through with the project. So we've got that happening potentially through the third quarter of 2020. And funding applications also occurring concurrently with that effort. That takes us out through the end of 2020. At such time that you would have the funding identified, you would be able to go through the rates, and that would also be part of your strategic planning. Design will take about a year. We've got about another year or half a year or so for permitting, bidding, advertising, bid review through the, through the other funding agencies, and then construction would be probably about an 18-month construction period for this. Again, this is a high-level view, but just to kind of lay out what kind of timing I would expect, this is, this is essentially a three-and-a-half, four-year process before you're turning the key on something. So it does, it does take a while.
Eric, in your experience, if a community is working toward a plan like this with an engineering study and making application for loans and grants, is it more likely that they're going to be able to resist an early warning sewer ban or?
Yes.
Early sewer ban warning?
Yes, yes, it is, because in fact, it was, it was already noted in your inspection form that was received and from your December 31st, 2019 inspection, that you were currently working with an engineer on a study of the system. So the first thing that they would come back to the city for is what's your plan to address this issue?
Council questions? I know there's a lot of information, and I know that a lot of this information has been shared with you through other meetings, but this is the first public reveal of this type of information, just questions in general for the council and clarification of anything that Eric might have mentioned during the report.
If we were to do this plant at the 3.36 or whatever million gallon, what's the possibility then in the future of needing expansion to expand on that? Is that built into this project or?
Yes. So what I would look at in, in respect to future expandability is during the design of the facility, you want to certainly make provisions to be able to expand the facility. This type of system, this is, this is what you choose to pursue, is very expandable. Essentially, the four tanks that I showed there could be added to one at a time. We also work with the town of Newburgh. They started out with three of these tanks and now have gone up to eight to handle there. So it's, it's definitely an expandable type of system.
So the infrastructure underneath these tanks would be built to the capacity?
For future expansion, yes.
When you say tank, is it just a litter tank or is it just a wall with the?
Yeah, the tank with the components inside as well.
Now, the report that you're giving us tonight asks this question. Where does that put us? You know, the funding question will come up. What does this, the report tonight, put us in a position to see, to start thinking about funding? What steps need to be taken to get to the point where we can start identifying resources to fund the project?
To fund the project. So we would certainly want input from the city about which, that they would want to pursue this type of a project. The report was, is generated in the format that is necessary for Rural Development Review and Funding, as there, as well as EDA follows a very similar report format for review as well. As part of your application process, the report would be submitted, and it's reviewed by an engineer with Rural Development to evaluate the current needs, if this is a sound plan moving forward, and if they agree upon your approach. They want to ensure that any monies that they're providing and loaning is for a solid project. The report that you have approved tonight essentially sets you on that path. We would simply need to add a conclusions section that the recommended project at the selection of the town is.
And from a timing standpoint, to get to a decision, what's critical from a timing for the funding, from the funding side of things, when would it be critical for us to make a decision on these options we might want to pursue?
There've been some preliminary discussions with Rural Development about their current funding pool and their current interest rates, which I had listed at 1.625. We've heard it may even be going down lower than that, and they've indicated getting that in prior to July of this year would be in your favor. EDA has also been contacted, and they've indicated that they would like to see an application somewhere around August or September of this year, sometime in the fall of this year. The course of events would be go through Rural Development first and determine what, what they would be willing to offer as far as a loan and grant combination for the entire project, and then you can take that to Economic Development Agency and say, "Look, we've got funding in place for the project. Would you really be willing to offer any more grant onto that?"
EDA is a matching grant, so in order for us to be able to apply to EDA, we have to have the other matching sources.
Matching, nice. Yep.
I know we had a little bit of discussion, or I had a question earlier about the demolition and the filling up, possible, after the fill of the lagoons up.
Yeah.
And there's quite an expense associated with that.
Yes.
Is it possible or prudent to try to put that in the total bid package? Can that be done?
Yeah, and I think-
Other than the city's going to be hit with a, with a hundred-year hit if we don't do that.
Right, right.
What, $800,000 to $1 million?
Right. I think that's something we can, we can investigate.
Can we look at that? I mean, I don't know this for-
I think, I think what, when we did have some discussion, we did have some discussion on that. I think that's, from our discussion is that we've reviewed this, is that might be something key that we, you know, we, bids go out, bid that as an option because it could be less expensive for another firm to come in to demolish than the firm who actually does the construction.
Right.
The reason I was asking, though, that you have to have your funding in, stuff in this year, July. So if you were going to couple it and spread it over 20 years or whatever, you're going to have to have it in there.
That, that number can factor into the total cost, exactly, yes, yeah.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
And the key point there, from the reviewer's standpoint, is to make sure that we have that mentioned in that plan, so then it would be an eligible cost.
Okay.
Eric, to reiterate, we've had an ongoing problem, an ongoing project for many year, a number of years, to reduce infiltration into our system, and that's been going on for 20 some-
2001?
About 20 years, if I recall, and, and you say you're, even with the best efforts, we might reduce, if you found, you know, major things, we might reduce our influx as much as what, 15%?
15 to 20% would be.
And that's not even getting us into the ballpark.
No, no.
So I just want to make sure I understood how that was. Because I know that that's an ongoing-
Yes.
Part of the, you know, part of the process. Every lateral is inspected when a home is sold, every, you know, it's an ongoing, I know that Brad's been here a number of years, and I know that that's really a big part of their, their season to work on that.
And we are stepping up that as well, but this, I know the, the Board of Works approved at their last meeting a set of flow meters, portable flow meters, so that Brad and his team can, you know, dig down a little bit deeper, say, "Are there any obvious things that we're missing?"
Analyze a little bit.
Analyze a little bit more critical data that we need to say, you know, is there something, although after 20 years, you would think there were, there may not be, but you know, if there's something that we have been missing, we'll have some technology available for him to make, make that assessment in a more clear way, you know, going forward.
Those piping networks will continue to deteriorate over time. So your efforts, your ongoing efforts to address INI and structural issues with the pipe, don't, don't-
Don't stop it, is it?
Don't stop it, yeah. That's, I'm not, I don't mean to sound like it's been a waste of effort. I think it has been successful because it's maintained at the level that you're at, and it needs to be, it needs to be continued as part of your ongoing operation and maintenance. But I think we need to be realistic about what that means from a flow perspective at the treatment plant.
You know, what I'm hearing is if we hadn't done this, we could be at 20% higher, higher in rates than we are seeing now.
Yeah, yeah.
Daily.
Yes.
My observation is that it feels like the worst thing that could happen in this project, regarding this project, would be for us to sit on our hands and get a notice from regulators in the near future or even in the distant future that y'all can't grow anymore. You can't add any more taps to this system. And then you look at that schedule, we finally decide, "Yeah, okay, we're, we think we need to do something now." And then you're four years out. You know, four years out from that point before you see real results. It feels like to me with that specter looming over this, this whole idea and interest rates extremely low and falling, that the timing of a project like this, even though nobody likes to propose rate increases, the timing feels like it's, it's good. You know, it's, it's a good time to be looking at this because construction costs are only going to go up in the future. Interest rates likely will go back up in the future. And it just feels like if we've got to do something, now is a good time to be looking at it.
I got a few things, but any, I want to hear the council, I want to know if anything else to do.
I just want to agree with Jeff. If we do nothing, basically, we're telling our citizens, our town can't-
If we do nothing, basically, we're telling our citizens, our town can't grow. You know, we, we can't take any more new homes, we can't take any more rent, we can't take any more business. We're stuck where we're at. Not that that's a bad thing because, but we want to continue to grow.
Right.
So if we do nothing, that, that would bring that picture in. And I have a question made for Brad. I understand, I said something the mayor of the county's talked about possibly after any, some sort of district. Has that been brought to, does that look like some of that may come our way or are they going to develop their own system?
That's a possibility. We met, I met with them last week. We got a meeting next week, we will be talking with them. Can we work that project in with ours? It's a possibility, yes.
And they could possibly help fund?
Yes.
And again, the, the timing of that is that says even if we would follow this timeline, should that, the county option become in, we're, we're still flexible enough before we get to that final design stage-
Yes.
That if, if that would change, and I think the county's on a, a little bit of a timeline to make a decision on that, certainly, we're going to be in discussion with the county. And we're, like I say, that we, Brad and I were notified the day of a, of a county meeting where we're in discussion. Brad met personally with, with one of the, with Commissioner Hostetter about it to, to have that discussion. So certainly, that's going to be part of the discussion as well because, you know, if there's going to be needs outside of the city that, you know, that we might have to, to participate in, we'd certainly want to incorporate that in, in any kind of design we have going forward.
It looks to be over 20 months from now, just from looking at that timetable. So that's a, that's a year and a half, so.
Well, I, I'd like to say if we could, that, you know, as, as many of you have mentioned to me, is that, you know, this is an issue that we have been working on for several years. I mean, there's not, the negligence here, the, the, the work that Commonwealth has done and kept us in compliance and the plant that, that the guys working at the plant have done everything. And we've, we've tried to stay as compliant as we can, but I agree with, with Jeff and Glenn, you know, it's, it's a critical time. One thing I want to make clear is that the discharge at the water plant, the wastewater plant, does meet the IDIM limitations, the affluent limitations. So it's not about the quality of what's going out of our plant right now, it's, it's about capacity. How much water can we treat? So, but, but we're at the limit where if we don't do something, that health concern could become part of, part of the concern as well. The amount of water being treated is, is, is going up. We're, we're in the middle of a water project right now from, from Gary Meyerholz that says our, we're producing 3% more water every, every year. Well, if you're producing 3% more water, it only goes to show that we're going to go, we're going to treat 3% more water every year because, you know, it's both, both ends of the equation. So, in a way, you know, it's, it's good news in a way that, that we are a city that, that is growing and is, is making some growth in a time when, when other cities may be struggling. We have residential growth, we've had our two major industries before this council in the last three years, make commitments to be here and invest in our community and stay here. So, again, these are, these are not easy decisions that we're looking at, but we, we do have to make the decisions right to allow our community to grow. And I, I think the bottom line from hearing from both, all the boards here is, the city of Huntingburg is going, is going to take the action it needs to stay in compliance with IDIM. But that's, there's no, there's no option on that. We, we have to do something to stay in compliance, to continue to offer this service. And, but we must also do it in a very responsible way for the rate payer. You know, there's, there's going to be rate changes because of this. What they are, we're not sure of at this point, but, but it's going to have to happen. And we need to find a way to do that as responsibly as we possibly can. So, so this is not an issue that's developed over a year, so we're not going to, I don't think we're going to solve it in a meeting, in one meeting tonight. So, but we do need to have a long-term effective plan, as Eric suggested on the second line there is the Strategic Planning Committee. That, that is something that I would, would ask the council to approve, that we would appoint a, a planning committee to, to take a closer look at all these details, involve our engineering team, involve our rate consultants, involve Buzz Krone in this, and, and create a plan that we could come back to both the Board of Works and to the council and say, "Where did we hit on these timelines? What are the rates associated with these different points in our, in our, our timeline? What would that look like to the rate payer as we progress through this?" So, we, we need to have good data for both boards to be able to make the, the best decisions that they can make. So, I guess what we would need to do is, as the Board of Works was the body that funded this, we would need a motion for, from the Board of Works to accept the report and say that the, the work with Commonwealth was contracted to do has been completed. So if we have a motion to accept a report from Commonwealth?
Motion made.
Motion by Blessinger?
Second.
Second by Saunders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Second thing I would ask for is for the, the council to appoint a committee to formulate the plan. I would, would be serving on that committee. I've asked Councilman McFerrin to serve on the committee. I would like, love to have another Board of Works member serve on, but because I'm a member of the Board of Works, if we have more than one, we can only have one member on there. Of course, Superintendent Coomer would be on that committee, Clerk Treasurer Dipple would, would serve on that committee. I've asked Rachel Steckler with Community Development meant to serve on the committee as well. So those would be the committee members. And as, as consultants to that committee, we would have Commonwealth Engineering and Buzz Krone, our rate consultant, to come together. And the goal would be on this timeline to come back sometime in, before, as that funding starts in the, in green, to be able to have some report back to both of these boards to say, "This is what the project might look like, what, what should the options are, are best?" And what that would look like as, from a rate standpoint. So if I would, would I hear a motion to appoint the committee as, as suggested?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by where?
I'll second it.
Second by Ballance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I would like to thank Eric and his team for Teresa and Brady was here as well as a great consultant with, with the IDIM matters for the work that, that was done on this. You've given us enough information to hopefully to make decisions that we need to reach and appreciate your efforts and, and your, your report today tonight. Any other questions or comments from the Board or the council for Eric or Teresa before we bring this matter to a close?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this point, we can close the Board of Works meeting. If there's a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Blessinger? Second by Saunders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for attending.
You're welcome to stay, guys.
Yeah, you can stay as long as you want.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Let me spread a little bit now. See y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda for the council would be to consider a request from a revolving loan fund, and Rachel Steckler has that information for us.
I'm asking for money too, but a lot less than Brad's asking. We do have a request for the revolving loan fund for a current Four Street business. It's Melissa Ilgan with Serendipity Fibers. She is requesting $18,000 over a five-year period. And I believe, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a little over $60,000 in the fund right now. This is to expand and diversify her inventory, possibly hire another part-time employee.
This was reviewed by the revolving loan fund committee-
Yep.
And the recommendation is for approval?
Correct.
Is that loaned out of an, an interest rate or is it just a payback loan?
3% interest.
Okay.
If the, if the committee has directed that it should go through, I would make a motion to-
Motion by McFerrin?
I'll second.
Second by Kissling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next up, we have a consideration of approval for a computer services agreement, and Rob Endel is here to discuss that. Hello, Rob.
Evening, council. Included in board pack is our newest computer service contract with Ekmundi. Really, the only thing that's changing is our hourly rate is going from 110 to $120 and our service call fees from 75 to 80. This is a usual contract that we do every year, gives me the ability to, to call them anytime I need to use our service. They manage our servers, they manage our backups, manage our 365 or email accounts. So it gives me the ability to call them if I need to. With this discount, looking at last year's rate was 110 and the $75 service call, by having this contract in place, it saved us $725. So, it's, it's a good thing to have, it gives me the ability just to call them. And since they manage our servers, that's why we, we get these reduced rates. If we wouldn't have them managing our servers, we wouldn't even have, we wouldn't be able to have this in place with them.
I got a feeling response time is a little bit better too, when you have a contract.
It's incredibly fast. I call them, they're either, they're, it's never, "We're going to call you back in three hours." It's, it's pretty much immediate. Anytime I call in to those guys, they're pretty much right away, they're going to help me if I need something. So it gets, yeah, their response is very fast.
And, and part of that is the equation is Rob's work on this end, when they know that, when he's called, he's asked all the questions that need to be asked to get to the point where, where they're brought into the question. So, you know, Rob's capability of troubleshooting to the point where, before he makes the call, I think that they understand that that call, when that call comes, it's at a point where we need, we need some response and they're very good at responding.
Yep.
And as I recall from years past, we're not giving them money in advance for the contract.
We are not prepaying anything.
Yeah, we're still giving them bill as we use their services, but just at the contract price.
That's absolutely right. That's correct.
Just agrees to a rate per year.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions for Rob? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the computer services contract with Ekmundi between the city of Huntingburg and Ekmundi.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by where?
Second by Kistling.
Second by Dubon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. There's another Ekmundi item on the agenda, just a more of an informational situation. Rob?
Yeah, so with the, I came to the council meeting on the 28th of January and you guys had approved our two new servers for utility billing on our main domain server. That total quote was, I forget the total money right now, it was like 40, 40 some thousand, you may have it in your records, Tom. Total, it was 19, $19,079 and $19,269 for total for those two servers. But those two servers, we quoted with eight core processors, microprocessors, but with the China stuff that's going on with the virus and everything. And then these processors also have just went into life. So, we can wait for the new generation of these eight core processors to come in, but they're telling us it could be three to four months or even longer, we don't know. So, working with the vendor, with Ekmundi, working with their vendor, the vendors offered that we could go to, we could upgrade to 10 core processors, they're going to waive the fee to jump from eight to 10 cores as far as hardware costs. It's about 800 bucks that they're just going to say, "Waive it, don't worry about it." But on the software side, we do need to upgrade our operating system. We license our operating system by cores of processors, so we, we're currently at 16 cores, but we're going to be at 20. So we need to buy four more cores of licensing, which is $2,908 total to move from 16 to 20 cores. The mayor and I have, I think we talked last week-
Rob came with me last week with this, and because of the timing of getting the order placed, I, I gave authority for him to go ahead and, and approve this with the amount being at an operational amount, but I'd like to have the board just ratify that decision and confirm that, that they'd want to move ahead with this, with this purchase of, of $2,908.
Our, our other main concern was is if we do wait three or four months or longer, we, we have known issues with both servers, they're starting to give us some issues, we don't want to wait and have a server completely crash. So it's, let's, let's be proactive and not wait for something to crash and then we're really hurt. So that was the other part of the decision.
Can you dumb it down for me? What's this mean in our system?
So, so these, so, so these processors, it's, it's how the, how the, the, the brains behind the server basically is going to operate. As you go more and more cores, the pro, the processor's more efficient and faster at processing data. So this is ultimately going to make our system, our processors, or, or servers faster also and, and handle the, the data better.
We're getting an upgrade, you are an upgrade before we ever get it.
Exactly. Yeah, that's a good way.
It's like a computer's working when we get here.
Yeah. Yeah.
You put one of those in here.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion or what do you want to do? Yeah, if we, do we have just a motion to approve the, the amount of $2,908 for the upgrade to the equipment for Ekmundi?
Motion to approve.
Motion by McFerrin?
I'll second.
Second by Ballance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Tonight, we have Scott Siefker from Taylor Siefker Williams with us to give us a presentation on the comprehensive plan to kind of bring you up to date on, on where we are on, on this plan. It was presented to the Plan Commission, and remember Kissling was our representative on the Plan Commission. It was presented to the Plan Commission at their regular meeting last month. And at last evening, they had a special meeting, a public hearing to, to allow public comment on the comprehensive plan. There was no comment and the commission voted seven to nothing in favor of forwarding this recommendation to the, to the council. So at this point, I've asked Scott to come and, and go through the, the, the plan, the highlights of the plan and ask the council, I'm, I'm not asking for action this evening, but I just want to make sure the presentation is here so you can ask questions of Scott and I would intend for the council to take action on this at, at our next meeting. Give time for, for questions and comments between now and, and that next meeting. So Scott, if you want to go ahead?
Very good. Well, thank you for letting me come and give you an overview in terms of what we've been working on, in terms of the Your Home, Your Huntingburg Comprehensive Plan over the last several months. So, this evening, I'm just going to give a, a broad overview in terms of the, the process that we went through, in terms of the development of the plan, a little bit then in terms of the structure itself, so you as the community and, and leaders in the community know what you're looking at when you reference the comprehensive plan and then touch a little bit in terms of some of the key plan highlights or key recommendations that were developed as part of the planning process. So, to begin with, I think it's always good as a community to kind of take a step back and when you think about planning, even the conversations that you have had this evening regarding your utilities and infrastructure, you think about planning on a comprehensive level is certainly the chance for you to revisit and to articulate in a clear, concise vision for where you want to go as a community. And so, the comprehensive plan is a, is a process that allows that. And certainly, in, in your previous planning efforts, you have excelled in terms of following through with your plan recommendations. And so, as such, it was time to revisit the Huntingburg plan. And so, this allows us to kind of refresh that and prepare effectively for the future. Fundamentally, the process seeks to answer four key, key questions. The where are we now? So kind of taking that snapshot of where you are as a community. Where are we going? Where do we want to go? And ultimately, how do we get there? And those two in the middle, the where are we going and where do we want to go? If you think about trajectories, sometimes the where you're going and maybe where you want to go, there's a gap. And so, the how do we get there, when we talk about implementation, really begins to address perhaps adjusting those, those lines, if you will, to make sure that ultimately you're going as a community where the, the desire is of, of the, the broader public. The comprehensive plan really establishes some key guidance and key policy statements, really that speak to kind of the quality, the quantity and the location of growth. And again, we were just talking about, or you all were just talking about, again, thinking And again, we were just talking about, or you all were just talking about, again, thinking about community growth, and this allows you to address that in a comprehensive manner. So everything from utilities and infrastructure to future land use discussions, to other quality of life amenities or features, all of which talk about, again, organizationally and putting some structure to that. Our process, as we went through the comprehensive plan portion, was divided into three phases. I'll speak a little bit about each one of them, but fundamentally, it was a sort of an existing conditions phase, a strategic plan phase, and that implementation phase. At the conclusion of this particular effort, then, kind of that, where we are in terms of that purple dashed line is sort of the adoption period that we're in right now, then we'll be moving into the development and the review of your code and ordinances. And so that's one of the tools that you have in terms of implementation on a policy side of things. And so that'll begin here later on in the spring. Fundamentally, a little key kind of highlights about each of the, kind of those three main phases of our work in the comprehensive plan development. That first phase was, again, that community snapshot, so that entailed an assessment of all your physical conditions, so if you had a chance to look at the plan and then appendices, there's, you know, all of your existing physical conditions, from environmental to your utilities, your infrastructure, your current zoning, as of right now, all of that's, if you will, a snapshot. We also did a demographic analysis, and so that allows us to look at some trends in terms of some of your demographic and socioeconomic data, again, allowing us to play with, if we're thinking about growth, where strategically we want to have that occur, and in what volume or what quantity do we want that to occur. You'll notice, again, some of the outreach components that I have highlighted here, fundamentally woven throughout the entire process was what I call those broad community conversations led by a core steering committee. We met several times during the process. It was made up of a broad cross-section of the community, and I think that they, we used them as kind of the sounding board as we were developing different elements of the comprehensive plan. But we also had opportunities for larger public engagement through some of the traditional workshops, through social media outreach, and key person interviews as well. The second phase really focused on the plan development, so the elements, if you will, that are addressed as part of the comprehensive plan, certainly those that are required by Indiana Code, which are fundamentally your land use and your infrastructure utilities they outline in statute, that a comprehensive plan needs to have some statements of policy statements and a vision regarding those. And then it gives, code, that is, gives us broad, if you will, suggestions about other elements that may be addressed. And so things like quality of life elements, or economic development, or tourism, are things that through the conversations here locally, we felt needed to be incorporated as part of the comprehensive plan in addition to the land use and the transportation utilities, which are, if you will, the only ones that are outlined by state statute. Again, we came back, had some public vetting on some of those key initial draft recommendations. Then we went back and worked on some prioritization of those. We've developed a draft document, had the steering committee review, provide some feedback and comment on that, and created some key action steps for, really, a lot of the, sort of the early stages, or a lot of the first tier priority-type projects. And so we talked about identification of roles, responsibilities, community partners, some funding, timing horizons, that sort of thing. And so, again, it's a roadmap for moving some of those various projects or recommendations forward. I mentioned some of the input throughout the plan. I highlight a couple of numbers there in terms of seventeen kind of unique feedback opportunities, whether that was, again, in meetings, or the key person interviews, or social media outreach. We did two online surveys at key benchmark milestone, milestone components of the plan. And then the five hundred and eighty-four, so nearly six hundred unique participants. So in terms of unique, some may have commented on more than one thing, but almost six hundred of your residents participated in one form or another as part of giving some feedback in the development of the plan. Little bit in terms of some of the specifics of, couple of the participation, our focus group meetings, we facilitated one with the mayor's youth council, one with the city department heads, one with elected appointed officials, many of you were able to participate in that, a Latino focus group, a broad cross-section of community focus group, and then one with local major employers. And again, each one bringing some different, unique perspectives and conversation to where they see the vision of the city going. Throughout the broader public engagement, when we asked things about, you know, what is your big idea for the community, you can see some highlights of some of their big ideas, ranging from recreational development to hotel or other types of new economic development initiatives. When we talk about, then, from the online survey, some echoed the same as what we were getting in the public workshops, but things like, again, the continued enforcement, not enforcement, continued support of the development of high-speed internet, the reinforcement of continuing to reinvest in dilapidated or redevelopment opportunities in infrastructure, and in a cross-section from your focus groups to our online, to our public, the diversification of, again, housing types. So all sorts of housing discussions came up, and no matter really what group we were talking with. We asked in terms of some assets in your community to leverage, and I just show a couple of these because I think it's interesting to see what kind of perceptions there are in terms of some of the responses here, in terms of the community assets that they identified, existing businesses, and your quality of place were two key, the primary assets that your respondents or your community had. And I think that, you know, quality of place and character is one that, over the last several years, certainly, the community's seen a lot of investment in, and so it's something that, you know, that's fresh and high on the community's mind, and so it's certainly an asset to leverage. Priorities or needs that they felt needed to be addressed, so again, the redevelopment or the investment in the infrastructure of dilapidated buildings or other redevelopment areas that could be prioritized, thinking about retention of population, in communication as an example with our youth council that we facilitated, we did an exercise of, you know, those that are planning on staying, or if they go somewhere, returning to the community, and we want to see as many hands as possible stay up, and we asked that question. And it's a mixed bag right now. And so certainly making sure that we're doing things, as a community development side of things, that attract and retain that population. And that goes hand in hand, obviously, with a priority of economic development, and then, you know, that sort of investment of the jobs and rooftops kind of go hand in hand there. Looking a little bit in terms of, just to give you a brief overview of the organization of the plan, we begin with introduction in terms of the broad vision of the community, and then we begin to narrow down, so if you think of it as a pyramid, we get, if you will, more and more specific in terms of issue identification and articulation of the who, what, when, where, and why. And so we begin with kind of that broad vision, and we introduce, when we got, you know, from those nearly six hundred different individuals, you can imagine the hundreds of ideas and kind of comments that we received. And so what we did was organize those into a series of four planned themes, of which each one then has some specific goals. And then as you go kind of to the next level down, each one of those goals then has some key objectives or key recommendations related to each one of those that correlate with some identified action steps. We do recommend that as a body, that the community look at in terms of the comprehensive plan and evaluation annually at least, to kind of give a little bit of progress, a report card. And I think that that's something that you've been, if you will, when you went through the stellar process, you were very much, like you kind of always were on the checking in terms of how you were doing with things. And so we think that's fundamental in making sure that what's articulated and identified as part of your comprehensive plan is not static, but rather it's something that's living and breathing. And so we recognize that, to the best of our ability, on the action steps, we identify things that, in terms of timeline horizons, as an example, here's when they should occur, but we recognize that maybe grant opportunities or other community conditions may bump up a project or bump up an initiative. And so that should be reflected as part of the comprehensive plan, and so that annual evaluation is key in making sure that it's a living, breathing, and usable tool and policy document, and not something that you don't revisit for another five years until you're doing another update or refresh on it. Organizationally, again, the plan itself begins, there's just an introduction section where we go through kind of the process summary that I just verbally highlighted, talked a little bit about, again, the demographics and the characteristics of the community. Most of the existing conditions and the community input is in an appendices, so in the beginning here, it's just an abbreviated snapshot, but for those that are interested in a little bit more of the detail of that, that's in the appendices of the plan. We talk, again, in terms of introduce how the plan is organized and the four planned themes that we structured all the recommendations into. And then moving into the, sort of the strategic plan portion of it, we introduce the community's vision statement, and I'll go ahead and just read that. This is something that the steering committee worked fairly extensively in terms of some dialogue back and forth on, and I think it's a broad, if you think of a mission statement for the community, this is a good place to start. So Huntingburg, a city like no other, is a welcoming, diverse, and connected community. There's a prime location for cultural and recreational amenities, destinations, opportunity, and a place people are proud to call home. And so everything that we did as we kind of moved forward, we tried to make sure that we were supporting that community vision statement. As I mentioned, we organized then the plan into four key theme areas, those being land use and housing, transportation and utilities, economic development and tourism, and then quality of life elements. So each one of those four planned themes gets its own section, so all of the sections vary a little bit, some have a little bit more of a graphic content in support of the narrative, some are more just on a policy discussion, highlighting a little bit in terms of some of those elements. In the land use and housing section, as an example, is where your future land use map is also highlighted or incorporated. And so we went through an exercise in terms of updating your future land use map. Again, this is not your zoning map, that's a separate tool that's used for implementation. So this just talks about, in terms of community growth, investment, organizational elements for land use, ideally the highest and best land use for kind of those key components, and this would be the reference map that we would use in those particular instances when some project or key initiative would come before us. We went through and then identified and defined each one, so when we talk about the various land use categories, we went through and gave an example and a definition for each one of those, talked about ideally criteria in terms of how some of that could be organized. If, so a developer is coming to the planning department and they have a project, then it's very clear from a community standpoint what you're looking for. And so this then would be, I mentioned on the code work, this would be something that we'd want to go through and make sure that your code is supportive of where you're wanting to go in terms of your future land use goals. So there's two goals primarily for each of the four categories. That first one, they're dealing with the future land use, this is talking about diversification of some of your housing stock and your related action steps for those. As I mentioned, each of those four planned themes has its own section, they're all organized basically the same, so from a user standpoint, it's fairly user-friendly. As I mentioned, some of the various goals, in each case, we give a narrative definition, the action steps, and if it's warranted, we have some illustrations or graphics that we tried to include, just to sort of articulate if there was a particular action step or recommendation that would benefit from a visual graphic, we included that as well. Again, things to make it, hopefully, very user-friendly. Economic development and tourism, so again, a couple of goals related to primarily investment on the kind of business development, as well as destination growth for Huntingburg, and then finally, that four-section quality of life. And again, all organized the same way in terms of the goals and the supporting materials for that. The final section in the plan then is the implementation section. So with this particular component, we begin by talking about what are some of the other partners or organizations or entities that could be helping in the implementation phases? We think this is key because it's not the cities to do alone in terms of all of the various recommendations, and, you know, there's no way, this entity as, the city as a solo entity can accomplish all of this. And so it's the kind of the identification and the conversations of who are those community partners and other resources is important when you think about a broad community implementation plan. For those key primary and early action steps, as I mentioned, we developed a table for each one of those that talks about, for the goal, the various action steps that were identified for that, the prioritization for those, the partners that would be appropriate, et cetera. And so this one here speaks to the ensuring redevelopment, new construction, industrial growth are compatible with the long-term vision, and then the various elements that are associated with that. As an FYI, your discussion with the wastewater plant, that I don't have that particular as a sample, but it's in here and it's one of your high number one priorities on the utility section. So that is certainly something that your comprehensive plan also highlighted and made note of. Briefly, a few of the highlights from each of the four, as you kind of look at those action steps, under land use and housing, things like enforcing property maintenance, monitoring rental housing, updating the zoning ordinance, UDO, the code, participation in terms of the Midstates Corridor, you know, a week and a half or so ago, there was obviously an update of that. The current information as of that update is what we have in terms of inclusion as part of the comp plan, but fundamentally being at the table, that's certainly important for the community. So those are things that are all going to be affected in terms of the future land use and housing program. Transportation, obviously, the Midstates Corridor is in that as well, but things like sidewalk and other connectivity programs, the trails, the DuBois County Trails, and broader regional connectivity, those were things that are recommendations or action steps that are in the comprehensive plan under transportation. Under utilities, so there's your wastewater treatment plant, capacity statement, these are elements that when we talk about kind of the community feedback, the utilities is probably the least that we get kind of the community comments on, quality of life or transportation, those are things that are more easily identifiable, but obviously from an importance of the nuts and bolts of keeping a community functioning, healthy, active, and safe, you know, these are key core components. And so I don't want to give the impression that the comp plan is addressing all new, you know, everything is identifying a new project or a new bricks and mortar initiative, but rather it also talks about those fundamental elements that keeps the community functioning, keeps the community healthy, and certainly some of those infrastructure projects as related to storm water management, utilities, electricity, those are key, you know, nuts and bolts that keep a healthy and active community. On the economic development side, a couple of the highlighted action steps, again, dealt with some youth programming or youth initiatives. Again, I referenced the partnerships that we identified, and it does talk about, you know, supporting some of those other entities and groups and nonprofits in your community, making sure that those relationships are strong, and, again, leveraging those types of activities for the benefit of each other, thinking about, again, projects that may attract new community development, such as a hospitality focus or growth around the event center as one example, or thinking about even simple things like leveraging the Leake Stadium and continue to use that as a resource that's certainly unique to Quality of life, so we had a lot of elements, your parks and recreation programming is in this section, and so things like a maintenance plan for the park facilities, more year-round programming identification, even looking at the creation of more of a indoor, perhaps, facility that could foster some additional health and activity well-being within the community. Thinking about more active, all sorts, not, you know, just youth programming growth, but also on the senior side of things, and looking at, you know, connections with the Latino community in terms of the growth and the conversation, and making sure that the barriers for, if there's, you know, we even talked about utility payments, making sure that there isn't any barriers for seamless interaction with any kind of municipal, basic municipal services or needs. And so those were all some of the priority action steps underneath the quality of life banner. Questions in terms of how the plan is organized, or just a highlight of some of the kind of the key action steps, obviously... Obviously, there's more when you look at it, but that's just a kind of a high-level overview of the process, the organization of the plan, and some of the key recommendations that came out of the process.
Questions?
Rachel, is this available online to the general public to view? There's also copies at City Office, but you can view it online too.
Yes, you can.
Maybe we can get that out, is it on the City's website?
Yep.
There is like a logo, I think, of the, if there's still, yeah, a logo of the comp plans, if you click there, some of the other comprehensive plan materials is all linked to there. So as mentioned, we gave a presentation to the Plan Commission last night. They met, gave a favorable recommendation to the council for adoption, and so, you know, if there's other further conversation or feedback, we certainly would welcome or address that. Otherwise, then, you know, potentially as early as your next meeting, then perhaps moving in from this body formally adopting the comp plan, and then that would be the comprehensive plan for the community moving forward.
Any questions? There's 140-some pages that you all have read.
There's a spelling error on page nine. It's quite in-depth. It's quite in-depth.
Lot of information there. Good job, man.
Hopefully, with the graphics, right, it makes it a little bit like 100 and some odd pages there isn't as daunting to go through, but...
It's not. It's not.
So again, the process would be, I think, from past history with the board, I don't think we're at a position where we want to approve this this evening, just to have Scott to be here and be able to present this information to you, offer any questions. Again, I think it would be appropriate to consider adoption at a subsequent meeting, again, allowing the public time to comment, or counsel to review, and any comments or questions that you may have before final adoption certainly would be welcome. And if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, you know, Scott or Rachel would be available to review that. I want to publicly thank all the members of the committee that served to develop this plan. We had a very good group, and I was, you know, you look at the number of almost 600 people were engaged in some way or another, that's typically 10% of the population was touched by this process in some way. And we're given the opportunity in many ways to come forward and speak, and we still want to keep that process open. But if there aren't any further questions at this time, we can thank Scott for his presentation, and we can have this available for, we'll have this on the next meeting as to our final approval, if there's any other question.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Mr. Snyder, anything this evening?
I have nothing.
Mr. Tippel?
I do. I just want to make sure that you all got and can, are able to review the submission that I gave you for redevelopment commission, required to do that annually to the executive, the fiscal body, which you guys are, and the Honeyburg Redevelopment Commission, and the Honeyburg Redevelopment Authority. Just a kind of a summary of who were the officers and the major activities that the money of each district was used for.
That document was placed out there, but I don't see it on the board right now.
Is it on the board, Doc?
It is, but...
It's in the, I think it's in the document.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Oh, I got you. Down here.
I know that we uploaded it, but I'm sure that... Do we need action on that, Tom, or?
No.
Just received it.
Just received it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure. If you haven't seen it, I think it was placed in the documents on the library, but I'm going to make sure that it's there.
And that's all I had.
Anything from the floor? Any further action from the council?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ballance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen, for your evening.